Well, hello and welcome to the July Macomb Park Board of Commissioners Meeting. Great to see all your faces in person. This is nice. We haven't seen each other in person since March, so it's good to see you all. All right, so as always, let's start with the approval of the agenda. Is there a motion to approve?
I make a motion to approve the agenda.
All right, is there a second? All right, it's been moved and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? All right, and the agenda stands approved. All right, consideration of an action on the minutes for the month of, what was that, June? Are there any corrections, additions, or deletions that need to be made? All right. Motion to approve?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right, it's been moved and seconded. To approve the minutes, all in favor? Aye. Opposed? All right, and the minutes stand approved. Bills and transfers and monthly financial statements, Commissioner Hamm.
Thank you. For the June 2020, the consolidated fund, the cash on hand at the end of the month, it was $235,444. Overall, we ended the month $10,451 better than budget. Year to date, $103,749 better than budget. General Fund ended June with $755,92 cash in hand. Overall, for the month, we were $21,890 better than budget projections. Year to date, $76,739 better than expected. Corporate account, we ended the month $16,041 better than budget and year to date is $34,879 better than budget. For the recreation, overall, we ended the month $2,553 better than budget and the year to date, $17,125 better than the budget. For Lakeview, we ended the month $427 better than budget expectations and year to date is $1,622 better. For Ball Four, the month ended $4,423 below the budget expectations with year to date at $6,167 below what was expected. Special Rec, overall, we're $1,841 better than the budget for the month. Year to date, we are $4,461 above the budget expectations. The police revenues, we ended on budget. The expenses ended $1,424 below what was expected. For the year to date, we're $5,177 better than budget. For payroll, the wages ended the month $12,603 below budget. The year to date is $49,854 below budget. Some notes of interest, the general fund amount that ended June, that was $755,92. That was partly a short window where money had come in and then was immediately moved to the corporate account the next day. That was 45% of the property tax distribution of $595,510 on June 29th. So that's why that entry was temporarily high. Again, the general fund cash on hand amount was high because that, a check for the bond retirement part, distribution of $286,456 was not printed until July 1st. So it's running into the next monthly figures. Also, we did receive a surplus TIF check from the city for $6,393 on June 19th because the corp, corporate camp was better than what the budget on revenues was. So that was a good thing. And that would, all I would like to report on today.
Any questions for Commissioner Hamm? All right, if there are no questions, a motion to approve the bills and transfers and monthly financial statements. All right, is there a second?
Second.
All right, it's been moved and seconded. Roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Weiss.
Aye.
Commissioner Edwards.
Aye.
Commissioner Hamm.
Aye.
Commissioner Gamage.
Aye.
Commissioner Hemingway.
Aye.
All right, and bills and transfers and monthly financial statements stand approved as published. Looks like we do not have anyone for open public presentations to the commissioners this evening. So that leads us to our next agenda item, which is, as you recall, last month, we tabled the election of supporting officers. So this evening, we need to elect an Assistant Secretary and an Assistant Treasurer. So with that, I'm going to hand off to Director Lenz.
All right, and again, acting as the Board Secretary, it is my privilege to get to host these nominations and elections. So I will go ahead and open up the floor for nominations of Assistant Secretary.
In the past, we have asked Chris Frankhauser to serve in that capacity, which he can do because it's secretary as opposed to doing the treasurer, Assistant Treasurer, where he has financial responsibilities. So pending his consent, I would suggest that we continue that relation, that past practice.
And I can confirm his consent.
All right. Okay.
So, is that a nomination?
It is a nomination.
Thank you.
I'd like to second that nomination.
It has been seconded. Are there any other nominations? Then I'm going to close the nominations. Is this a roll call vote off camera? I'm so confused now. Okay, it's still a roll call vote. Lovely. We will take it to a roll call vote then. Commissioner Edwards.
Aye.
Commissioner Hamm.
Aye.
Commissioner Gamage.
Aye.
Commissioner Hemingway.
Aye.
Commissioner Weiss.
Aye.
I will congratulate Chris when I get back to the office tomorrow.
And tell him he can thank me later.
Will do. Okay, and I will open up nominations for Assistant Treasurer.
I'd like to nominate Emily for Assistant Treasurer.
We have a nomination? And a second. Emily, would you accept that nomination?
I will.
Are there any other nominations? All right, I'm going to close the nominations then, and we will take it to a roll call vote. Commissioner Hamm.
Aye.
Commissioner Gamage.
Aye.
Commissioner Hemingway.
Aye.
Commissioner Weiss.
Aye.
Commissioner Edwards.
Aye.
Congratulations, you're the Assistant Treasurer.
All right. Very good. Okay, let's continue on with the agenda here. President's Report. So on July 6th, both Director Lenz and myself, we attended the Macomb City Council meeting where Mayor Mike Inman proclaimed July as Park and Recreation Month. So that was really, really cool to experience and I'd like to publicly thank Mayor Inman for that. And we've always had a great partnership and looking forward for that trend to continue. I'm slowly starting the process back up in regards to the strategic plan. So I'm hoping to have some new information for all of you for the August meeting. And finally, wanted to let the board know that John, Russ, and myself, we had been invited to attend the dedication of the Joanne Finley Memorial, which will be held on Saturday, August 1st. And it's going to be a gathering, I believe at 10:30 a.m., gathering over at the Joanne Finley Butterfly Garden, which is located near the Lions Pride Shelter House out at Everly Park. And this was something that Rachel and the Park District staff recently completed. When was that?
We had nothing to do with it.
Oh, you had nothing to do with it?
Macomb Beautiful.
Oh, so that was just all Macomb Beautiful. Oh, I just assumed.
Before I discredit him, Jeff Hoyt, our Superintendent of Maintenance, he did go in and pull out some tree stumps just to assist in the process, but otherwise, Macomb Beautiful did the design, they purchased the plants, they did the, all the hard work.
That's great.
Not that pulling stumps is not hard work, but yes.
So, with that being said, it's also, this Butterfly Garden has, it will be officially registered with the Monarch Watch Organization as a Monarch Waystation, which is awes- I mean, that's really, really cool. So that's all I have as far as President's Report. Director Lenz, your report.
All right. Just to kind of piggyback what Phil was talking about, we were very honored that the City Council and the mayor took the time to declare, proclaim it National Park and Recreation Month. This is something that has been going on since 1985. It might be new to Macomb, but it is not new to the nation. NRPA, which is the National Recreation and Park Association, created this as an opportunity to celebrate what parks and recreation can do for the communities that they are a part of. We've seen through parks and recreation partnerships that create opportunities. We've seen communities find their true potential. We have seen opportunities be brought to life by park districts and park departments and wildlife conservation. And so we are honored to be a part of that legacy. We're honored to be a part of that influence in the Macomb community. And we're honored that we get to share this celebration with the multitude of recreation agencies that provide opportunities for Macomb residents. You know, our neighbors over in Spring Lake have done a phenomenal job with that facility and are nothing but amazing partners to work with. The YMCA and their dedication to youth programs and just their senior programs are phenomenal. And, you know, I could go on and on about the gyms and the other opportunities that are provided by a multitude of Macomb organizations. But, you know, this is something that I believe those who provide recreation opportunities, those who provide open spaces, they truly deserve that recognition. And, you know, although we're coming up on the end of July, it is never too late to thank a recreation provider. So, you know, we have made our Mondays in the month of July, Maintenance Mondays. So you will see us post something about maintenance every Monday in July because they are the unseen blood of an organization. They really do keep our parks beautiful. They keep things operational. They keep them accessible for our residents. And they do it very gladly from the top of a tractor without any interaction with people. But to give them wave, to give them a head nod, to smile and say thank you, that means a lot. So I would challenge you, our viewers out there or whoever, if you see a park district employee, if you see a Spring Lake employee, if you see a YMCA employee, do thank them for the work they're doing. You know, I think through this time of COVID, and when we were in the stay-at-home order, a lot of people realized the value of what an open space could bring, not only to our mental health, but, you know, for connection even from a distance. So we're very thankful to the city and the mayor for declaring it Park and Recreation Month and celebrating that opportunity that we have the opportunity to bring to Macomb. Also, piggybacking on some of the stuff that Russ was going over with the financials, oh boy, we were pretty nervous there towards the end of June when the first tax distribution took a few extra days to show up. And I know that Gretchen has had her hands full with the county, so we are grateful for the work she continues to do, but we got nervous. So it was tight there for a second. Huge, huge. Again, I know I've said it every month, huge shout out to the staff. They did a whole lot with a whole little. But they were very, very excited to get that call from me that says the hiring freeze was lifted. So you will notice now a lot more activity, not only from our Maintenance Department, but from security. We have a lot more staff on board now. But, you know, I cannot thank the staff enough for bearing through that with me. And, you know, it put us in a much better financial position to be successful as we continue forward and plan for whatever else is ahead of us. Our parks are opened, as you might have noticed. Our playgrounds are open, our skate park is open, Lakeview is opened. Ball Four is not. And although it is not directly COVID-related, it kind of is as well. So Ball Four, we were doing construction on, which I had alerted you all ahead of time about. And I promise you, we cannot make this stuff up. So we got, we got our materials to do the work. Again, Jeff, in his infinite skill in whatever I ask him, was willing and able to lay the carpet and came across an issue where the carpet and the glue that was provided us was creating a chemical reaction. And so although he laid it flat, five minutes later, it would bubble up. Called the company, had a few words back and forth, until eventually I went, let me talk to them. And I did a little research on what was going on. Well, the glue that you're supposed to use on this specific brand of carpet has zero hazardous chemicals in it. And the glue that we were provided has hazard symbols all over it. So I went to the company and I just said, listen, I believe your distributor did you a disservice. This is not the way it's supposed to be, blah, blah, blah. Please call them. And also, please replace the pieces of carpet that are now not usable because. And of course, they were happy to oblige and apologized, but that was the issue. So we, they ordered us new materials and then the truck drivers went on strike. So then our materials were postponed delivery for at least two, I believe, three weeks. Did arrive, and then we had 100-plus degree weather. So we are just now waiting for the weather to give us three to five days of clearance, and then the carpet will be laid. Jeff and his staff have cut the pieces. They are ready to be laid. We just need a couple of days for the glue to have time to cure the concrete. I know we've had a lot of inquiry, and we're just not sure how to put that into a social media post. So, Pat, I leave it to you and your infinite writing wisdom to tell the public what I just said. But we do intend to open, so that is the hope. Ball Four, hopes to open can be the headline, whatever you want. I will keep you guys apprised. As soon as we have a few days of clearance, we will definitely send out a press release and make it well-known on social media. We are very ready for that facility to be used again. So hopefully, 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 in the near future. What else? Hand sanitizer stations have been ordered. They were ordered back in March. We keep getting updates that they are in production. They're still in production. They should be shipped soon. So I'm just going to start telling you when it finally arrives, but they will be installed again at our playgrounds, at our areas of heavy use, the skate park, Lakeview Nature Center, the office, ceramic studio. So we were able to secure 18 before they closed orders and still waiting. So I know this is a national issue. A lot of people are looking for these touchless hand sanitizer stations. We should have them throughout the parks here, fingers crossed, before our next meeting. But I believe I said that last time, so don't hold me to it. Each of you would have received an email from me with the Infectious Disease Response Plan. I mentioned it last meeting. Kudos to Superintendent Armstrong for his diligence with this. It was not his favorite task that I have ever assigned him, but it was necessary and, I believe, well edited. The original document came from iParks. They are our risk management organization. They provided us the sample for where they believe we should go with this document. And we whittled it down to what fits for the Macomb Park District. So this is what we will do in the case of another resurgence. This is what we will do in case of another infectious disease that is not COVID. But from the point of view, we do have something in place, a plan, should we need to go on lockdown again. And if you guys have any questions, concerns, gripes, or moans about it, if we missed a page number in the table of content, please don't hesitate to let us know. I'd be happy to entertain those. Accompanied by that, I think a quick follow-up email was the governor's new mitigation plan in case of a resurgence. It was a quick three-page plan. There's not a ton of detail in that, like I mentioned in the email, but there is now a system in place with the new regions that have been assigned. We are now in Region 2. And should there be seven days of a positive increase and seven days increase in hospital admissions due to COVID-related symptoms, I think it said seven-day average out of 10 days, then there could be mitigations at a certain tier level. The way that it seems easiest to look at it is Tier 1 would take us back to what Phase 3 restrictions are. Tier 2 would take us back to Phase 2. Tier 3 would take us back to Phase 1, which is lockdown. That's the easiest way that I have interpreted it with the minimal detail that is in the document. So that is not something written in stone, but that is, again, how I've interpreted it, and that's how we will work with that document until the state sends us more detail should Region 2 enter into that scenario. So, any questions so far? I don't want to get ahead of myself and... Okay, cool. All right, some other things, a little bit more lighthearted then. Month of July has been for quite some time. Unplug Macomb. We started this about four years ago. It is a state initiative through IPRA. And it is our opportunity to engage people in the art of turning off their social media devices, turning off their electronics, and plugging into nature, plugging into activity, plugging into the parks. So you'll see several of our social media campaigns right now featuring one of our beautiful parks that we have here in Macomb and encouraging people to engage in that. It has partnered really well in years past with NRPA's Month of July campaign, and we believe it did really well again this year. So the We Are Parks and Recreation, which coincides with the, it being Parks and Recreation Month in Macomb, we are looking at the history of what has happened in Macomb, where the parks have been, what they were before us. And there's been a lot of fun history that's been dug up, thanks to WIU Archives or some of the history pieces I found in the office. But just really reconnecting to the roots of the Park District, where we've been, what has been in our parks. I've actually heard on quite frequent occasion about the train that went through Everly Park, but was able to find a picture of it in the archives, which was very fun to see. I believe Laura Leiser has asked me to find a picture of the playhouse for almost a year and a half. That was in Glenwood Park. Finally found it in the archives. So there's been a lot of development and a lot of change in our parks, but it's been exciting to share that with Macomb and just remember where we've come to see where we're going. So keep an eye out on social media for other fun facts about the parks, other mentions of, you know, Macomb Park District staff, and other random events. We've had two pop-up events in relation to this. We had a puppy adoption in Patton Park to celebrate the dog park. Kids could come down and adopt a stuffed dog, not a real dog, but, you know, it actually went over fairly well. We had a lot of great feedback about people appreciating it being a pop-in program. There were small crowds. And one little girl was so thankful that she got to adopt a little puppy because they have a cat at home and she's not allowed to have a dog. So she finally got her dog, which I thought was adorable. And then we also were able to do a mural painting over in Everly Park. Just, we just had a big bed sheet and invited people to come out and paint on it. So we're hoping to do more of those things in the future and engaging people in very small but meaningful ways. So we were also able to do a movie in the park on June 26th, our first day of Phase 4. We watched The Lion King, and it was excellent. I thank everybody who attended. Everybody did a great job of remaining in their little space with the cars. You know, everybody did a good job of social distancing and following our recommendations. Thank you to Phil for showing up and assisting. He volunteered his time that night and his expertise, so thank you for that. We're excited, we're very excited to do two more in the coming months. August 14th, we'll be showing Captain Marvel. If you have a costume, I highly encourage you wear it. And on September 18th, we will be showing Onward. If you have not seen Onward, gentlemen, even you will cry. It is a great movie. It is a great movie. So very much looking forward to that. We are emphatically grateful for the continued partnership we have with First Bankers Trust. They continue to sponsor this program even through these times. John Armstrong was first on the scene and last to leave. And he has done that since day one with Wizard of Oz. He truly loves the movies in the park. It is evident. And again, I'm just very thankful for the staff from First Bankers Trust who showed up. They helped us set up. They helped us hand out flyers. There was not popcorn at this event, but they are hoping that if regulations and patterns fit, that they will feel more comfortable offering that and handing out popcorn. But yeah, it was just a great event. So be on the lookout for, again, August 14th, September 18th, our next two drive-in movies in the park. Okay, and then last but certainly not least, I mentioned last month that Jessica Stevens had left us with the SRA. And I am beyond elated to tell you, we have hired Julie Eggleston as the new MCSRA Program Superintendent. If you do not know Julie, she is a wealth of therapeutic recreation knowledge. I remember going to Western, she would hate me for telling this story at the meeting, but I'm doing it. I remember going to Western for my undergraduate, and she was a graduate assistant with the SRA. And she had started an equestrian therapy program called Angels. And she came and talked about it in one of my classes, and I was just all in. I was all in. It was an amazing program, beautiful therapeutic benefits from equestrian therapy, and really the reason that I said yes to doing a graduate study here in Macomb. Dale Atkins is the one who asked the question. Julie Eggleston is the one who put it in my mind that it would be a fun opportunity. She has been the Executive Director of two other therapeutic recreations, therapeutic, sorry, special recreation associations. She is a professor at Western currently. I believe she has teaching experience at one other university. So she is just a wealth of knowledge and experience. She's really going to bring the SRA back to those therapeutic principles and guide that SRA. and guide that SRA back to the glory that it's meant to be and the purpose that it's meant to be. So we are, we're so happy to have her back a part of the Park District family and to be bringing new opportunities and a new level of organization to the McDonough County Special Recreation Association. And I do not say that as a slight to Jessica. She was phenomenal. But on the day that I offered Julie the position, she said, "Perfect." I've had some anxiety. I've planned the entire fall. It's like, okay, get it, girl. So she's excited and ready to get started, apparently. But again, a wealth of knowledge, a wealth of experience, so we're so thrilled to have her.
Awesome.
Yeah. Yeah.
Any questions for Director Lenz? All right, next on the agenda is discussion on Everly Trust Memorandum of Understanding with possible action. Commissioner Hemmeyway.
You can relax about the possible action. The Memorandum of Understanding, otherwise known as an MOU, is not finalized. I am still waiting for some financial and legal information that's necessary to do that. I need to provide a little bit of background. There are three members of this board who serve also as Everly Park trustees. The important thing there is that the responsibilities of the Everly Park trustees and the responsibilities of commissioners are separate. The Everly Park Trust was created in the terms of a bequest that provided the original funding to acquire the property of Everly Park and also then to provide principal for earning interest that would allow operation of, modification of, beautification of Everly Park. The purpose of the MOU is to be a bridge until we are able to finalize a contractual agreement between the Park District and the trust. We want to create a firewall between the district and the trust so that there can be no question about the responsibilities of both bodies. Once again, the trust is charged by the terms of the bequest, and that bequest is overseen by the district court. That's a different role than the Park District. One of the reasons for getting commissioners to serve is that the previous trustees had all reached a point where they wished to step back. They'd served for quite a while, had reached the point in their lives that it was time to step down. The Park District has had a understanding and agreement with the Everly Park Trust for some time in which the Park District was responsible for programming and maintaining in the park. The MOU is intended to be the next step in formalizing that arrangement and in specifying how the two bodies, the Board of Commissioners and the Everly Park Trust, will interact and what the various responsibilities will be. Let me sketch for you some of the items that will be included in the MOU. The trust itself has often relied on just one or perhaps two people. This means that things like record-keeping, both clerical and financial, have not always been as systematic, though I want to stress that the records that have been handed to us are very complete. We continue to have some difficulties with at least one of the financial firms with which the trust has some investments. They just have not been responsive. So, for example, one of the items, and this is a result of some conversations with the director and with myself as a representative of the Board of Trustees, the decision still has to go rest with the entire Board of Trustees. I'm not trying to speak for them. I'm just trying to get some things set up so we can move forward. But for example, we're proposing an annual payment from the Board of Trustees of Everly Park to the Park District in the amount of $500 to cover clerical, secretarial, and financial record-keeping functions so that the taxpayers are not paying for something that the Board of Trustees, for the park, is doing. We wanted to make that clear. We have also discussed continuing the arrangement whereby the Park District provides maintenance in Everly Park and that being billed at cost to the Board of Trustees so that things like mowing, and actually, one recent example has been the clearing of some noxious plants, some beautification efforts in the park carried out by the Park District maintenance people. I forget what the exact cost. I think it was $1,200 or something like that.
We, it was, last year, we cleared out the Vail-Morgan Memorial plot and re-laid some new mulch. So the Park District, in honor of Vail's memory, I mean, we took care of the labor, but the cost of, oh, no, you guys did cover the cost of labor, didn't you? It was material and labor, oh, it was us pulling out the trees that we didn't ask for.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Things of that nature that contribute to the beautification of Everly Park, which is one of the functions of the trust under the terms of the bequest. So that will take place in consultation between the director and the trustees. It won't be an issue where the, you know, the park goes in and says, "Oh, well, let's do this and bill the trust $5,000." Because if they do that, we're going to blow up the Park District building, which might actually lead...
It's insured.
Yeah, I thought so. Okay.
It has some leaking problems.
So we should talk about this down the line. Is that what you're saying?
Patrick, don't print that.
Good enough there.
The director and I have had a conversation about some planned future projects. And the question is what kind of financial support the trust could provide to the Park District for some of those projects, provided they're consistent with the terms of the bequest. These are all the kinds of things that we are trying to build into the MOU and eventually into a contract. One of the things that we will, of course, need to remember is that the Board of Trustees of the park needs to remain the final voice in controlling the park and that financial responsibility requires maintaining a sufficient balance to continue to generate interest so that various projects can in fact be paid for. As you can imagine, in today's economic climate, that interest is a little difficult to get into. And I am suspecting that the district court would frown on buying lottery tickets. So that is where we are right now. I am hopeful that we will have wrapped this up and a memorandum of understanding can be placed before you and in front of the district's attorney and the Board of Trustees lawyer. Those are two different people by the time we meet in August. So that is that. And I'd be happy to answer any questions, including the strategy for blowing up the Park District offices.
That's a closed session.
Somewhat relevant, is there, within the MOU, is there any talk of a specific number of trustees? Or is it just the three?
There are three trustees authorized legally. There can be no more. There can be no fewer.
Okay.
Who those trustees are is up to the Board of Trustees. And there are a number of conversations that the current Board of Trustees needs to have in order to clarify that and move forward. But that is not an issue for this body. It's for that Board of Trustees. Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much. Okay, let's see, where are we at? We're at the open commissioner presentation and discussion of future agenda items. Yes?
I would like next August to see where we are with the lighting project at the Veterans Park. I know the youth leagues have started having scrimmages out there and actual games. They're limited, of course, with the situation that we're in, but just would like to have an update.
Absolutely.
I do know, if I recall, continuation of that conversation, last we spoke, there was delays because of the COVID-19.
Yeah, originally, there were, but more recently, and recently being six weeks ago-ish, they had placed the order for the product, so it's being produced. But because the youth leagues are playing, they're waiting until after league play before they... So hopefully in August, they'll at least have a date set for when they're going to. Because I believe the last date for youth leagues is that first week of August. Yeah.
Yes, Commissioner Hemmeyway.
Earlier today, there was a webinar produced by the Illinois Park and Recreation Association, co-sponsored by the Illinois Association of Park Districts, on some of the conversations and events that are occurring around racial equality, anti-racism. I am often skeptical of such programs. I will say that as one of the older people in this room, perhaps the oldest, we might have to arm wrestle for that pat. I worked in the '60s as a civil rights volunteer in a couple of cities. My skepticism of these kinds of programs is based on the difference between the street and the studio. But I will say that this was an outstanding program. I was much impressed. There are two further webinars in this. The information has been distributed, I know, by the IAPD. If you have the opportunity to participate, to listen in, or to view the video of this, I think it is very worthwhile. And I think it is something that we need to address in this community that we have too easily brushed aside. And then if you have conversations with people, candid conversations with people, regardless of race, you'll find that they are being brushed aside or just confusion and uncertainty that makes it difficult for people to address these kinds of issues, yet it's absolutely essential. And we're going to see more of what we've seen in this community and elsewhere. So I really think they were well done. If you're worried about things being preachy, not in the least. Any of you that know Jeremy Robinett from Western Illinois University? He was a participant. Jeremy is the least preachy person in the world. It was good, so take advantage of it if you can.
If I might piggyback on that, I actually was going to, even though I'm not a commissioner, ask at the will of the board if I could make a suggestion. And it was based around that webinar. Superintendent Armstrong and I also attended, watched. The four presenters, Michelle Mason, Latonya Wilkins, Dr. Jeremy Robinett, and Dr. Augustus Hallman, really did speak candidly about the issue. And Jeremy, as the singular white person on the panel, was very point about being honest and upfront and just saying it how it is. There's a lot that just is institutionalized and not seen. And this is a great time for us to speak out and to make a change about it. And so my request to the board was going to be IPRA, as well as NRPA, has created sample policies that are diversity, equity, and inclusion policies. And I would say that we're about 25 years behind in not having one. So they have made it quite simple for us in empowering us to make the right choice and making our parks open and accessible and equitable for everybody we serve. And they, again, they made a lot of great points. Even some of the way that we time things doesn't fit with other people's cultures. And we probably just don't have any clue.
The point is not just to have a policy?
Right.
But actually to do something?
Yeah. I believe it was Michelle Mason who said, "Hold on, hold on. I wrote so many quotes down. Can't manage what you can't measure." And then Tracy from, is it NWSRA? "It better be in your strategic plan, baby." Is that her name, Tracy? Yeah, she's awesome. So yeah, I believe it should be part of our strategic plan as well.
I recommend it to you. We need to deal with it. No, we must deal with it.
I think we need to, yeah, celebrate the opportunity that our parks are there for everybody and we welcome anybody who wants to be part of them. I mean, that's what they're there for.
I am very interested in watching the webinar. I'm sure I got it and I just didn't see it.
I'd be happy to forward it to the commissioners.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you. That'd be great. And I will add that in my notes for the strategic plan. Any other discussion points this evening? Okay. Well, that, oh, yes.
We make a motion to adjourn.
Yes, sir.
Second.
All right. It's been moved and seconded. This is to adjourn, by the way. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? All right, we stand adjourned. Thank you all so much, and really great to see all your faces in person.